I will call the meeting to order, and I would ask if you could stand if you're able and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. I'm going to move on to public comment. Does anyone here want to comment on anything not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none. A report from student rep. Owen, how are you today?
The day before February break, the student council organized and executed a student-teacher basketball game for the whole school to see. By all accounts, it was a great time, and we even got to see Brandon in a shooting contest. Some of our swimmers and divers represented Middleborough and Whitman Hansen in the state competition, John Boersdam, Rory Brennan, and Mike Aben for swimming, and Nikki Hart and Declan Hastings for diving. The ice hockey team secured a tournament spot with a huge second-half run, ending the season with an unfortunate loss to Silver Lake. Hockey captain Josh Diamond received the MIAA Boston Bruins Sportsmanship Award, and he will be recognized at a Bruins game. Joe Escholus and Jacob Studley represented Middleborough well at the state wrestling tournaments, and Jayden Estrada of Aponequit, who wrestles for Middleborough, won the competition for his weight class. Congratulations to all. Congratulations to the majorettes for beginning the season strong, and for the open team for winning first place. And Heidi Cretian has been named the 2018 Start Strong Coordinator. Congratulations to her, and I'm glad to see this great program continue. The speech and theater workshop has been engaging in Tech Week this week for their festival production. Supporters can make their way to Joseph Case High School for 12:15 on Saturday. Best of luck to them. Thank you.
Very much, Owen. Does anyone have any questions, or?
I'd like to comment, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Chair. My comment is that when I hear the achievements, all the different achievements, majorettes in sports, the Start Strong program, it goes back to when I think of what Paul, at the high school, the principal, Mr. Gagian does here. We talk about respecting one another and achieving, doing our best, and I think of the Thursday, the posts and the shadowing of a student. That's the type of stuff that we could use more of, not just in our district, but my son said it to me today. Maybe if the rest of the country adopted something like that, some things, some other things wouldn't happen. And it seems so innocent, but I think about it, and it's true. I mean, I think about the achievement that's going on, and my son said, "This high school is the best place, I think, in the world." And he said that to me tonight, right when I was walking out the door, and I had to stop and say, "What do you mean?" So, and I think of what you were just reading between the majorettes and the hockey, and everyone's doing these great achievements, and they're doing it, and you're going away next week, I believe, down to Hyannis for student council? Amazing stuff going on. Just keep it up. Just keep it up. Thank you.
On the end there, you mentioned there was a young man from Aponequit who wrestles for Middleborough. That's in agreement with MIAA that we have a joint team together. We could, neither town could, neither school system could run a program alone, so together it was run with a coach. And that young Estrada gentleman, is it Jacob Estrada? I think he won the 113-pound state championship in wrestling. So, we had an op, he had an opportunity to wrestle when we put these two teams together, and he might not have had an opportunity if we hadn't. So, congratulations to him. He is, does live in Lakeville, goes to Aponequit, but he wrestles in the Middleborough-Aponequit Cooperative Team. So, I just wanted to make sure folks know that, because I know that Owen used the word, used the name Aponequit, and I wanted to make sure everyone knew, understood that.
Like the Middleborough Hall hockey team.
Middleborough Hall has a hockey team that it's associated with, and Whitman Hansen also swims with Middleborough. So, a lot of these schools.
So, anything we can do to help boost up numbers and still provide programming for kids, we do.
Yep.
Any other member of the school committee have any comment? Seeing no one, I'll move on to Mr. Catino. Mr. Catino, welcome.
Good evening. Sorry I missed the budget presentation. I was so looking forward to that. You know, like peeling my fingernails off.
I'd like to see it. We'll be at the Selectmen's meeting on Monday night.
Well, there we go. I could go online and watch it, too, I'm sure, so. Riveting, I'm certain of that.
Absolutely.
I really don't have very much, and we had parent-teacher conferences at the high school last night. Thankfully for me, I had more students, more parents come in for students than I've had in the past, but then I got an honors geometry class of mostly freshmen, so, you know, you get, you get more parent involvement at that, at that level. My, my other classes are all seniors, so they're just, I think the parents are just hoping they'll, they'll finish. It does, does kind of work that way at that point, but.
Finish strong.
Finish, finishing strong, yes. They're just hoping they'll finish. But anyway, I don't have anything else. If anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Catino. We appreciate it. Thank you. Next up, we have, we actually have student recognition tonight, don't we?
Yes, we do. We have a student showcase. I'd invite Mr. Martin Gagian to come on down to the microphone. Marty is the principal here at Nichols, as you probably know, as you know, but folks in the audience may not know. And he has a guest with him on a special honor. Mr. Gagian, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us tonight. Each year, I get to come up here and present to you our Project 351 representative, and a few years ago, it was Owen McCarthy over there. Three, Project 351 is something that Deval, Governor Deval Patrick started, I believe, back in 2011, and is something that I think that your daughter actually was one of the first, one of the first representatives for us. And each of the 351 towns gets to select a eighth-grade representative to represent their town at, at a day that Owen Kidd was selected this year for us. And each year, I come up here and tell you that it's a very difficult decision, and it's one that the full faculty votes on and puts forth nominations, and I like to try to grab the students that were nominated and tell them that this is what the faculty and staff think of you and thought of you as someone that, that represents character and achievement, and all the things that Mr. Gievenoni was kind of speaking of before, that just the greatness of Middleborough and what we are. And Owen got to go and do the day for us, and I'm, let him talk about, it was kind of a, it was first set up to be during Martin Luther King Jr. weekend, but because of the weather in Boston and things, they ended up putting it off, and so, again, this is the, this is the commitment that these kids do. And as Owen, there are always kids that are involved in sports and music and activities, and yet they still put things off in order to go and represent us well, and I know Owen did a phenomenal job. But I'll let Owen speak, and I didn't want to steal any of his thunder here.
Hello, I'm Owen Kidd, the Project 351 ambassador for Middleborough this year. As Mr. Gagian said, Project 351 is an organization that unifies eighth graders from every town and city in the Commonwealth, bringing them together and preparing them for a year of service. Recently, we had Launch Day, which is the first time all of the ambassadors gathered together. The main purpose was to do a day of service in the city of Boston. We met at the JFK Library, and then after some explanation and inspiration, we split into groups and traveled to service sites around Boston. My group went to the Greater Boston Food Bank, and we sorted and packaged food. We ended up preparing 29,000 pounds of food equating to 35,000 meals. I met many great people. Everyone there was kind, compassionate, and excited about what they were doing. All the kids, we were, were split into service teams, each one represented by a person who creates change in Massachusetts and all around the world. I was part of the Mahatma Gandhi Service Team. Governor Charlie Baker and First Lady Lauren Baker were at the JFK Library, and they did an interview with a reporter for all of us to witness. Some of the service heroes were there as well, and they said a few words. We rode buses to travel from place to place, and on each bus, there were Project 351 alumni. They were there to inspire us and organize us, and we had a lot of fun on our bus. We played games to get to know each other better, and they informed us of what was going on, making sure everything ran smoothly. At the end of the day, we met back at the JFK Library, and there was a celebration. During the celebration, we had the opportunity to sign up for spring service, which is what I'm here to talk about. Spring service is an opportunity for the Project 351 ambassadors to make a change in their own town through a clothing, clothing drive. The clothing will be going to Cradles de Crans, an organization focused on helping children who are either homeless or in bad economic situations. The goal of the clothing drive is to gather as many clothes, clothes and toiletries for children, for children ages birth to 12 as we can. My proposal for the drive is to put three boxes out, one near the office, one in the media center, and one near the gym entrance. I will advertise it on the announcements, and I will also visit classes to talk about the drive there. The donations, we will accept our winter coats, boys' and girls' clothing, and hygiene essentials for infants and children. The items we accept that will be donated to Cradles de Crans will have to be new or nearly new, because as Cradles de Crans says, "Through quality comes dignity." The drive will last from March 26th to April 6th, and I will sort the clothes during this time, shipping them out to Cradles de Crans at the end. Also, we have the chance to donate clothes to a local organization such as Salvation Army or something like that. These items do not have to be new or nearly new, and will be accepted in the same time slot as all of the other clothing. Thank you. And are there any questions?
Just so everyone understands, you're looking for pretty much any clothing, and you'll separate it between the new and the potentially used about where it's going?
Yes, that's correct.
Excellent. And Owen, one question I always ask, and to be honest with you, I love the Project 351. Would you recommend it to other students?
Definitely. It's, it was a great experience for me, just on Launch Day, and we still have a year left, so I, I think that it's, it's a great organization that I think everybody should have a chance to experience, but.
Great. Any other questions for Owen?
So, I've known Owen for quite a while, and I'm sure he represented Middleborough extremely well during the day, so thank you for doing it, Owen.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
It's a proud moment. It really, it really is. So, congratulations.
Those are the kids back there, too.
Thank you very much, Owen. We appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
Keep up the good work, Owen. I am going to go off our agenda for the moment, because, and just so everyone knows, rarely do I add things to our agenda, and Brian's been here for as long as I have, and I can't think of anything I've ever added in the past. I'm allowed, under statute, to add anything I view as unexpected, and so tonight, we're going to have a conversation about school security. We're gonna, the chief's here tonight, and the chief's going to sort of lead that conversation. We're going to make a proposal to everyone that we'd like a vote on tonight. One thing that I would caution people about, when asking questions, we'd like questions in more generalized terms. We don't talk about school security in open and public session. So, if you do have questions, if you could think about it that way, I may ask you to more generalize it if I, if I have an issue with the question, just so everyone knows. So, Chief, I'm going to invite you up.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Chief Joe Perkins has joined us tonight. As you know, and as you heard from Andy Dizel, who recently appeared before this board, updating us on the District Emergency Response Team, we have a lot of responses in place. We have a lot of verbiage and a lot of policies in place with regard to if something ever happens, how do we respond to it? And the chief, we've always had conversations, but the chief is particularly tuned in to the recent Parkland issue in Parkland, Florida, and in conversations with myself and Alan Frawley, chairman of the Selectmen, Rich Young, chairman of the school committee, and Bob Noons, town manager, have come up with a bit of a plan to, to beef up security and prevention as opposed to response. So, Chief, welcome. Thank you for coming, and if you want to start, and go right ahead.
Thank you for having me, Mr. Lynch, and unfortunately, it's a very awkward and uncomfortable conversation to have. I understand that as a parent, but I also understand, I think, the anxiety that parents have, and, and students, and faculty as well. So, I, I feel some type of responsibility to hopefully ease those fears in, in having conversations with my command staff, Lieutenant Andre, Lieutenant Ferrera, you know, trying to come up with some way to address the issue. I don't think, I hope and pray that we never have to deal with the issue here in Middleborough, but I don't want to face that day and not having done, I think, everything that I possibly could have done, and at least have the conversation with people, and I think we're at a point, unfortunately, in history, where we need to address permanent security, law enforcement security in our schools. You know, and I think everyone at, from a parental role would say, "Of course, I want to keep my kids safe." But then, rightly so, you have people who are responsible for budgets, things like that. How do you pay for something like that? And the argument would be, "There is no cost on a child's life," and I agree with that. So, in conversations with the command staff at the police station, the day Parkland happened, February 14th, it was a Wednesday, that Thursday and Friday, immediately, the police department, I felt it was important for the people in the town to see us when they went to school the next day, so we had officers at every campus in the morning. And not to intimidate people or, you know, "Why are the police here?" I wanted people to know that we were thinking about them and, you know, their fears and dropping their kids at school, or the kids coming in on a bus, or even the faculty driving in. You know, it's the faculty we have to worry about, too. It's not just the kids. I wanted them to know that we're thinking about them, and, you know, it's not, I don't think it was enough just to think about them and to have a plan in case something happened. What do you do to address the issue and, you know, prevents a big word? At least, the very least, minimize something as tragic as Parkland. So, conversations every day, it's been six school days, I think, because of vacation, that, you know, we've been at the schools. I reached out to town leadership, Mr. Young, Mr. Lynch, Mr. Frawley, Mr. Noons. Once we had a couple of ideas in place, and we met, and we've talked about it, and I think we're at a point now where we can, you know, put it up for comment in conversation. It's, it's, it's been a difficult process for people in education, I think, from a law enforcement perspective, to accept the SRO, the SRO role of the police officer in the school. And I think we've had a very good relationship with the school, and I think our SRO, SRO program is excellent. But unfortunately, it's not enough. We have one officer for four campuses, five schools. That officer travels around. He's spread thin. I think in the SRO role, again, he's effective. You know, we've built relationships, administrative relationships, partnerships at the educational level with the principals, with the teachers, with the staffs. We have police officers that'll come and eat lunch and, you know, high-five Fridays with the kids and enjoy that trust building. You know, SRO is the officer that is going to look into situations that develop from student-staff interaction. It's more than just policing. It's, it's relationship building. A school security officer is just that. They have one role, one objective. They're not tasked to build relationships. They're not tasked to, you know, build trust partnerships with students. They're there to protect the people in the building. And this is really a unique classification. I don't think it's really out there yet. The SSO role, the school security officer's role, is literally to stand guard in a building. That's it. They're there to prevent, deter serious bodily injury and death. It's plain and simple as that. And unfortunately, this is the conversation a police chief has to have with the school committee. I can't, and I wouldn't ever, just show up unannounced. This is a, this is a long conversation between the town leadership and myself. I would never impose our will on students in an educational setting. We need to be invited, but I think we're at that point.
What it's our intent to do is we will, by the end of the, we will, for this year, have extra money in our SRO account. We pay the police department for the use of an SRO officer. We have money left over in that, we will have money left over in that account. What we'd like to be able to do is allow the chief to use the remaining funds for the rest of this fiscal year to have school safety officers available at school. That will allow us to carry through the year. We've already began discussions about what we wanted to do next year, and we'll have a larger proposal back to the committee for that as we go on. But tonight is really about allowing the chief to station school safety officers at school with the remaining funds that we have. Mr. Chair? Yes. Still moved? Do I have a second? Second. Discussion. I want to thank the chief. Periodically, the chief and I meet for coffee, and we sort of shoot the breeze. The chief brought me in. I had a very nice conversation with his command staff, who are parents, who were wondering what we could do. We sort of sat down and rolled a bunch of ideas around and had really good thoughts. And, you know, as the chief said, while these school security officers are there, essentially, the one role to be guard, I would maintain, and I believe the chief would maintain, that it's about good community policing. It gives our kids an opportunity to meet police officers in settings that they're used to. It allows them to forge friendships. I grew up in a small town where, I kid you not, I knew every police officer in my community, because we came across them every day. And I, you know, and sort of, that's, you know, we grew up knowing the police, knowing the police, and that was important. And I knew all us kids. You know, and it was a situation that they, they could hire by name. They knew who you were. They showed up at basketball games and football games and rooted for the kids. And so, this is, while it's about safety, it's also an extension of community policing, and I think that's important, too. Mr. Chair? Yes.
Although I, I thank you for telling us you need to be asked, and you are always welcome. Anyone is welcome, and you know that, of course, but.
Well, I think, I think it's in the way we are presenting ourselves. You know, an SRO or a police officer on patrol stopping in, or the chief of police going to a football game and standing on the sidelines, I understand that. That's what we want to have, but I think this role is.
A little different.
It's a little different. It's a directed role. You, I'm telling the officer, you have one job and one job only. Even to the point of, if you see two students fighting, your job is to separate, prevent someone from getting hurt, and that's it, and no more. You call in the school administration, let them follow the established procedure that we've had in place for years. If the administration feels that law enforcement is, should be involved after that, that's their decision. That's not our decision. We're not going to sit there, and if the two kids are fighting, they're not going to throw cuffs on the kid and take them away. That's not their job. And they're not going to engage, you know, in, you know, if someone disrespects them. It doesn't matter. You get paid to do a job, and, you know, if they don't like you being there, the kids, or there's someone who doesn't like policing, it's not an issue. You just stand there, and they understand, and I think a lot of the people in the police department have this desire to protect our children, and they are our children, because we are members of the community as well.
And Mr. Chair, also, I want to thank yourself, the staff, yourself, Selectmen Frawley, Bob Noons, and if there's others that are involved that we don't know, and that's fine, too, but thank, thank you for. It was, I mean, talk about a fast response. It's a fast response on a difficult plan. It doesn't seem like it's that easy to put something together like that, but you have, and I appreciate it.
The details aren't hammered out as far as, you know, I need to, you know, there's a directive that, you know, the officers that are filling that role would have to follow. I mean, we haven't had a conversation, or I haven't had a conversation with Mr. Gagian. I haven't talked to him. You know, it's not really my role to talk to him, but I, I know the relationship that the school administration, the school department administration has. I think he understands our role as well. You know, Mr. Brand again, I've, I've spoken to briefly. We talk regularly. So, I, I think it's, again, I don't want to start off on the wrong foot, and if there are any questions or sensitive areas that school administrators feel that they need to talk to me about, we can adapt, and we can address any issue that they have, so this will work. And, you know, how do you measure success in something like this? We don't, successful is nothing, nothing ever happening. But we don't want to measure, we just want it to happen, I think, and give parents that mindset of feeling safe, and the children, and the faculty.
Other questions for Chief? Mr. Chair?
Just so I'm clear, so we're authorizing use of the, the budget that we have for, who's, for additional time? Okay. So, who makes that decision right now? So, moving forward, if we vote yes, who's making that decision about where they go?
It's the chief.
Chief, okay.
Chief makes the decision. He runs safety. We don't, so the chief, chief will make that decision of what he feels best. And to be honest with you, as we, we discussed it, as I understand it, Sergeant Trask will sort of be in charge of the operations because. The day-to-day operations. He's the day-to-day operations overseen by the chief, and obviously, his command staff, but. Because primarily, just so everyone knows, Sergeant Trask has a variety of responsibilities. So, Sergeant Trask is the SRO for the entire school system. Part of his job is not only to go school to school and deal with issues, but sometimes he goes to courts. Sometimes he has to go deal with probation, so he will be part of making that decision along with the chief, because he's going to know his schedule, what he's doing, where he's going, and what's happening.
I guess, you know, being part of some active shooter trainings I've been through, response time is so critical, and I know Parkland is like six minutes. So, what would, can there be something else we can do? Like, I mean, are you looking at, I think it's fine to do what we can now with the money we have already approved, but are we looking at, like, I mean, I guess potentially getting an officer every campus? I mean, is that, is that something we're going to try?
And I'll let the chief talk, too, but it's our plan to come to this committee by the end of the year for a plan for next.
For next year?
For next year.
Okay.
So, yes, we do have some financial support through other creative financing methods that we've recently come into to expand the SRO program. Again, there are some conditions that are placed on the use of that money, and the town would need to make a commitment, but it wouldn't cost the town specifically any more money. So, it's very, I don't really want to get into details, but know, if you're looking and you're putting your financial manager hat on, know that it doesn't cost any more money to implement this plan for the rest of this year. And next year, if any money, no money to expand an SRO role to have two, and very little money to have the SSO, school security officer positions funded throughout the year. How many? Where and when? Again, as operational, what we would call operational security. So, yes, it's easy to say, "Hey, there's a police officer in every school and two SROs." You know, we're looking at rather larger expense. I think, I feel more comfortable saying, "We have four police officers assigned to four camp, available for four campuses every day." Where they are, when they're there, who's there, how they're, where they're going to be, people don't need to know that. And I think that's important.
Well, I'm fully in support of this. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you. Right?
Mr. Chair, my good. Chief, could you clarify for folks in the audience here and folks at home exactly what Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 269, Section 10J says, so that everyone in the audience knows that?
So, part of the conversation, I think, that the internal police department conversation was, "What can we do? What can we do as parents and police officers?" And following the news and following the details as much as they have, one of the issues that we kept hearing about was arming teachers. And whether you agree or disagree with it, it's, it's really kind of a nonstarter in Massachusetts, because it's against the law for anyone to carry a dangerous weapon on a school campus other than law enforcement. So, even if you considered arming a teacher, they can't carry it. It'd be against the law. So, they'd either have to repeal the law at the state level, or you'd have to come up with some creative way to make teachers police officers, too. So, I think this addresses that problem or that debate, at least locally. We've, we've come up with our own solution. We don't have to look into that or start even thinking about the ramifications of arming teachers.
And Mr. Chair, finally, before the vote, I just want to let you know that as superintendent of schools, I strongly support and favorably, favorably recommend this action by the school committee this evening.
Great.
Having been through presentations like Mr. Dizel and the DIRT program, and their Alice training, Middleborough is ahead of a lot of school districts in this training. They've done it for a number of years. The school I teach. The school I teach just got it, and many of my colleagues have never heard of it yet across the state. So Middleborough is prepared ahead of everyone else. Also, the building design is something that is a big part of security. And one thing I was happy to see in presentations of the budget as well was the fact that, you know, there was new security being put on, new security being put on doors, updating the security profiles of all the schools. And with the new high school being built, having gone to the building committees, number one topic is how do we secure this building? How do we keep everyone inside safe? So those are ways to do it. There have been a lot of other ways to talk about keeping schools safe, as you just brought up there. Number one, this idea is one of the most excellent ones. This is one that I love the fact that we can do that with our school budget that is intact. And I feel like that, having worked with SRO officers and security officers as well, they are a comforting presence for the faculty and school, and it makes better relationships with the students of the school as well.
And I think that the SRO program's important because it does build that relationship between faculty and law enforcement, students and law enforcement. They see us, you know, hopefully if you have an effective SRO, and I believe we do, they see us, there's that comfort level. There's that trust that's been built up. So now we're at a point where you need to kind of trust us. And I think having that, you know, that pathway already built out by the SRO program, it only, I think, will make this transition or addition, not transition, it's an addition to what we're doing, a lot easier, a lot more acceptable, in especially in education, educational professionals' minds such as yourself. Because, I mean, I understand the educator's point of view, it, what kind of environment? It's important, the environment that you're teaching, you know, do you want the kids really thinking, why is there a police officer here every day? Walking up and down the halls, you know, are they doing something wrong? It, it may, it may make it difficult, but I think we're beyond that now because of what's going on. I think the fear is just too overwhelming. Every parent, whether it's, you know, realistic or not to think that it could or couldn't happen in town, I, I think you're beyond that. It just has happened everywhere. And I, I think to give the people peace of mind, it's just, it's going to be the new normal.
And my question would be, would this be a new hire for you, or are we going to extending duty to what you already have?
No, so what we would do now is, I have, I have offices that can work every day. With the, the, the financial plan that we've come up with to fund this, there's no, no additional costs this year. Next year, even if we were to add another SRO, it's no additional cost to the town. Like I said, it's a unique financing program that we've recently come into. And any further financing of an SSO program, or to maintain what we implement as soon as you vote, to extend that to next year's school year, there may be a slight increase beyond the already 60 grand that the school department and police department enjoy that relationship and reimbursement. I don't think it'll be, it would not be more than, it would not be more than double. It would probably be another 25 per side.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone in the audience have any questions?
Seeing none. I have a motion on the table to allow the chief to station school security officers in our schools through the end of this fiscal year. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous.
Thank you very much, Chief. We really appreciate it.
And again, if anyone has any questions, or if you think of anything after, and well, maybe you got caught up in the moment, or if any constituents approach you and want more information, I think it's important to tell people, feel free to call me or, you know, call me back to a meeting if you want to have it in public. We will reevaluate after each year. It's very important when you're doing programs and implementing change, that part of that plan, there's always a reevaluation or to look at, what have you done to make sure that you're doing it right? Could we do something better? So again, at the end of this school year, we will reevaluate, and I guarantee at the end of 2019 school year, we will reevaluate again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
I'd like, real quick, I'd like to thank Chairman Frawley, Mr. Noons, Mr. Lynch, Mr. Young, and my command staff, Lieutenant Andrade and Lieutenant Farrar, for, you know, it was a team effort trying to figure this out. Thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen. I'm going to move on in the agenda. Superintendent's report.
Mr. Chair, members of the committee, a few things to go over tonight from my standpoint. The first is the scholarship booklet additions. Dr. Gates had presented three additional scholarships, the Ellie Osborne Speech and Theater Scholarship, the John Hilsbeck Jr. Television Production Scholarship, the Middleborough High School Class of 1968 Memorial Scholarship. And I'd like to get these added to the scholarship book and approved as school committee policy dictates, that these need to be formally approved. So any, does anybody have any input on those? I know those were pretty fully explained. We have one additional one that's going to be in Scott Nelson's name, and that is not, was not in the package, so we'll put it in the package for the next, the next meeting. So.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second. Discussion. Again, thank you, Mr. Lynch, and especially thank you to Dr. Gates, and then she worked exceptionally hard to find scholarship opportunities for our kids, and we really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any further comment? Hearing none, all those in favor with the approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
My second item is the preschool tuition increase, and I just wanted to remind folks at home and remind the school committee that we did vote on recommendations from our PPS Director Carolyn Lyons last year on a two-year plan to increase the costs for preschool. And I just want to let folks know that for next year, the daily cost of the preschool program will go from $8.50 currently this year per day to $10 next year. That was voted and approved by the school committee last year. I just wanted to let folks know, remind folks, that that is an increase going up for FY19. It doesn't require an action by the school committee, it's just, just a reminder that preschool tuition will top off next year at $10 per half day, which is great opportunity for an educational day for these young people. So we move on now to, any questions on that? Sorry. The Green Communities application. The Green Communities application was, was put together in the town manager's office. And Kathy?
Andrew. I don't want to kill his life.
Sue Fourth.
Sue Fourth was spearheading that program. So he's been working with our side. We're going to put in the request for the lighting, but the, the D O E R has granted the money to Middleborough, but we have to put in a plan. So through the plan is the application of what we are going to use the money for, and they have to approve it. So that was all due last Friday. So in the application, we had to supply them with the ASHA Level 2 audits that we had done at the both buildings in the complex. So the $150,000 that we are expecting through the Green Communities grant for the school side may not cover all of it, but there might be other, some incentives maybe from G and E that we, because we want to kind of get as much done through one summer as we can throughout the whole complex. So we just wanted to let you know that the application was submitted Friday, and we're just waiting for any questions that they might have, or just, the money will be presented at the town meeting through the Capitol Planning Committee.
Yeah, and we do thank Seth Pickering and Jim Hutch also, who worked on this. Seth Pickering is a young man, or a younger man. When he was a young man, was, was a neighbor of mine, and he worked closely with us in developing this application through the, he's the regional director of the Department of Energy Resources. Very helpful in this. These Level 2 studies that were done and that have been done are good for over a year, and, and he's assured us that next year, to get the rest of the money, we could just submit that same report. And he's also told us that in the report, or we've read the report, and the report indicates that between six and seven years from now, this money will be recouped in the form of energy savings for the replacement of these lights at the, at the complex.
But we're not paying for them anymore?
We are not.
So we're not, we're not paying for the, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair? So we're not paying for the lights hopefully in this grant? And we should be able to hopefully save $150,000 over the next five, six years?
Right.
Win-win.
It's like a $300,000 plus.
Got it. Any other questions, concerns? It's a good thing. Next, special town meeting articles. Mrs. Pietrelli.
So every year, Mr. Noons asks by March, early in March this year, it's going to be March 9th, that if we have any articles to be presented at the special town meeting or the annual town meeting, we present them to them. In the past, we've always asked for money from our transportation budget be transferred into our operating budget because we usually have a surplus in the transportation, and we could always use a little help in the regular budget. This year, we're not as fortunate. We have several, as I, we've mentioned before, additional unanticipated out of district special ed placements and tuitions. And also, the kids need to be transported. We've been short on drivers, so we've had to contract out some of those runs. So we do have surplus in our transportation budget, but we need to move it from one account to the other. And we can't just do that ourselves. It has to be done by a vote at town meeting. So once we transfer approximately $90,000 from the mini bus lines into the contracted service line, we will still be short about $40,000. So we will need to ask the town for an additional appropriation of $40,000 to cover, it covers homeless and the contracted out students. So that would be two articles. One is the transfer, one's the additional funding for transportation. So our special ed tuitions and services budget is over by $800,000 as we are right now. We've looked at the budget, and we know right off we can cover 200,000 of that. We also have a revolving account that was set up several years ago for Medicaid reimbursement that has, we will be able to pull 300,000 from that. We are very hopeful that we will be getting reimbursed from the state for extraordinary relief. We're hoping that's 300. However, we won't know that until early to mid-April. So we're asking that we put in a placeholder for an article for $300,000 from the special town meeting to cover, to make the 800. I've talked to Mr. Noons, and I said, when we hear from the state for the extraordinary relief, we may be able to withdraw the entire article for 300,000 or reduce it. Hopefully, we can redraw, withdraw the whole thing. But because the deadline is March 9th, and we won't have any idea of what it's going to be, we need to, I believe, put a placeholder in. So we're asking your approval to move forward with those three articles for the special town meeting.
So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
One of the, one of the pieces that I know will always get asked is this $800,000 overextended. This is over and above anything that we could have anticipated because it, it's a, as some people that really know it, and I feel this way, that special education is a fluid thing. There's no, I mean, throughout the year, halfway through the year, something could change. An individual education plan could change, and before we know it, this, this student might have to be out, educated outside of the district. We don't have the resources. The law requires it. We really kind of have as many resources as we can, but it's fluid. This 800,000 is over and above what, anything we've planned for the year?
Absolutely. And as you say, it's fluid. There are still students whose placements are changing today. So even 800's not in.
It's not just a new, it's not just change in placements. It's also children moving to our community who have placements already that we have to become responsible for. So I think that's, that's part of it, too.
Absolutely.
And then with regards to the funding sources that we're trying to utilize, even if we can cover all these expenses this year through these separate funding sources, more than half of that 800,000 moving into next year, we no longer have a funding source for, correct? So $639,000 worth, we may not have a funding source for heading into next year.
Possibly. Our, our relief will go up a little bit next year because now our expenses that we submit to the state in July will include...
Those, okay. I'm just trying to think of, I don't want to think the next step, and I'm thinking the next step beyond this is what questions could come up with regards to this...
What are our plans for next year?
What are, what are our plans for next year? And the, and the answer is, we'll, we'll know when we, we get to October 1st or whatever.
Well, I think after the town meeting, the budget subcommittee's going to meet again, and we do anticipate, you know, several retirements, so we will have some savings there that we can at least, you know, start to cover a little bit.
And the hope is placements change.
Yep.
You know, we know Caroline works very, very hard to make sure that we, our kids get the placements they need at an affordable price for our community. And so that's just as important.
Mr. Chair, I wasn't, I didn't want it to sound accusatory or...
No, no, no. I didn't take it that way.
Right, because I was looking at it, and I'm saying, okay, 800,000 is way more. We, we, you always have these little things, but freezing discretionary spending, I mean, it's not really, it's discretionary, quote unquote, but it's not always discretionary. But we're freezing things that we typically would buy that we might need because we might not need it as much as we need the other thing. Wow. 800,000, but it is what it is. I mean, it's what we have to do.
Greg?
So you're saying with the formality of shifting... In the money at town meeting, we will shift money over, then ask the town possibly for up to $37,000 or $40,000. Is there any chance it could be higher than that, that we'll be requesting the town? Because you said a lot of it required, like there's 300,000, I think you said you were waiting for the state. So is there any chance we could be asking more from the town?
We won't have a bite at that apple, I don't think. With, Mr. Chair, with, with the placeholders that we're putting, you can't go higher. You can only stay there or go down.
Yeah.
So at this point, these numbers are our numbers going into town meeting, and the only way we'd be able to do it is the fall town meeting, because I don't see a special coming up for any other reason, and requesting a previous payment. But a lot of times, we get that circuit breaker, we may have to spend some circuit breaker before to cover.
Hopefully, we get this 300 from the state, the relief. Have to spend that, but that will cover this. What if it goes up?
Yeah. We'll be back here scratching our head. I mean, yeah.
I did, I will ask Mr. Noons, what if, you know, when we get to the end of the year, that I needed more than 40 to do that? People will get paid. I guess it would just have to be a fall town meeting appropriation, I would assume.
If it is a fall town meeting piece, then it is, it's a nine-tenth vote for a previous bill, if it's a previous bill from a previous year, but we could, we've done it, and I don't think we've done it in the last seven years, but I recall doing something where we had something carried over once.
We, we have done it in the past, and just so everyone knows, what happened to us, we did one recently at a special, and it had to do with a bus bill that went through a crack. And it was only like literally $300 or $400. And it was just, we believe what happened, it was in the, a child was in the process of moving. And so the bus company sent the bill to the other town, and they waited a month or two and sent it back to us, and by that time, the end of the fiscal year. But we, we have done it for a small amount of money, but you're right, Brian, we have not done it for a considerable amount of funds. As a matter of fact, one thing that people should know, as far as the bus drivers go, we did have a conversation with Mr. Noons about, should we have done it that way at the special town meeting? And he said no, and the town treasurer agreed that we could spend the money on the bus drivers, and then if there was a problem, we could go back to them later on. So we check on those particular pieces, too. Any further comment? Did we make a motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Any, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor approving the articles, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next on the agenda here is the FY19 budget presentation, which you folks saw on Feb. 15. It's going to be redone at the Selectmen's Meeting on March 5th. It's scheduled for 8:30. Eight o'clock is on there, just in case it gets a little quicker and we go a little faster. But it'll be the same presentation that was provided to you in our budget hearing with slight, slight modifications, if, if just from what we say, actually... with slight, slight modifications, if, if just from what we say, actually, at the meeting. I don't think we're going to take any slides out. We may take a picture or two out, just to make it a little bit shorter. But any of you folks that would like to go to that, you're welcome to it. It's at the Selectments Room. Like I said, you've seen it before, but if you would like to be there and support, you're more than welcome. Obviously, it is an open meeting, and I think last year, we had Rich, Brian, Mo, I think were there last year. I don't know if anybody else had the chance to go. But, yeah.
Can I suggest that we extend, can I suggest we extend an invitation to the Finance Committee, letting them know that we'll be there at eight o'clock on Monday? They're not meeting Monday, I don't think, at this point. I think they're meeting on Wednesday to meet with the town manager to kind of go over the budget stuff, too. But just so if they wanted to, if they didn't catch it here, or they wanted to have it, because I was at their meeting on Monday, because I knew they were going through their budget stuff, and I answered some of the questions, some of the questions that came up, they, I gave as much clarification between what used to be the, the homeless and the, the foster, the foster piece, and that's why there's two separate pieces in there, and it has gone up a little bit because of the situation, and they kind of knew that, but you explained it better, Kathy, I think. I think Kathy explained it a little bit better. So, that way there, if they want to hear it, they can hear it, or they can watch it on TV.
That's a good idea. We can certainly try to do that tomorrow, and reach out to the Finance Committee through, probably Mrs. Lieb, or? I would say so, maybe. She can send something out. Good idea, Brian, very good idea.
If, if I just can add, I wrote eight o'clock, but then the agenda came out today for the Board of Selectmen, and it's really eight-thirty, and Mr. Noons said, might be a little later than that, because there are a couple of departments before us, so it's going to be between eight-thirty and nine. Correct.
If there are no other questions on that. And finally, Superintendent's Goals, and what I plan to do for the next meeting with, with your permission, is to prepare a summary of sort of my mid-year. I've met, now met with all the, the administration, administrative team that I'm responsible for in terms of, in terms of their evaluations, and I've gone over their goals with them, and gone over their sort of formative mid-year sort of piece, and I want to provide for you an update on where I'm at with my goals, if, if that's acceptable for you, Mr. Chair, and for the members of the committee. Just to let you know, we continued my goals on, obviously, there are a number of them that are, that are pretty obvious with regard to continuing with the new superintendent induction program, final year, working on the strategy for continuous district improvement, and things such as that. So, I will provide an update in the Dropbox on the Friday for the next meeting, and get that to you so that we can discuss an update on my goals on our next meeting.
I just want to have a brief conversation, and I'm going to group it with number five, the Superintendent's Evaluation. The goals, so what Mr. Lynch usually does is set us a, where he's at with his goals and what's going on. If you remember, when we negotiated the superintendent's contract, we talked about having everything wrapped up by end of year to make sure that the, everything fell in line with the superintendent's new contract. It's my intention to, I believe, at our first, at the next meeting, I'm going to send out the pack, we're going to send out the packets for the Superintendent's Evaluation, because I'd like them all back to me by the, our first meeting in April, because it does not make sense for new members to be evaluating the superintendent as, as we have in the past. Greg, you've been around for a while, and we sort of open it up to, it's your choice. I can't tell you not to, it's entirely up to you, but I think you've been around for, for enough months to make an informed decision. Usually what happens, as Megan knows, is the new member sort of abstains, sort of adds their two cents when we do it, but they sort of abstain from the writing. So, if we can get that done prior to the next time, we'll, we'll have that all in and move on from there. But in relation to that, one of the things I sent out, Meg and Brian are on the Superintendent's Evaluation piece. There is a new provision of the Superintendent's Evaluation, and so I'm going to ask you to meet with the superintendent and have a conversation. As you guys know, we sort of have the forms, everyone fills out the forms, and has sort of, we've all voted, you've used your forms. There's a new provision that allows one of two things to happen. We can do it exactly the same way we've done it in the past, and again, I believe this is a conversation with you and the superintendent, so I'm going to leave, we can do it exactly the same way as we've done it in the past, and since we're using those forms in an open meeting, they are subject to open meeting law. The other way to do it, which they've just recently allowed, and we set, and was sent to us, an update from MASC, if you all give the chair their, their, your minutes, and the chair puts it together as one packet, then those, those meeting, those notes are not subject to open meeting. So, that was the legal piece that went around to, to, through MASC about a month and a half ago. So, I need from the Evaluation Committee what way they want to go with the superintendent. So, I'll leave that up to a discussion with all of you. So, it is the Superintendent's Evaluation, so I really would rather have you guys have that conversation. So, that's that particular piece. Did I miss anything?
We could set up a meeting at some point. The evening's okay with me, Saturdays are okay with me, if you want to sit down for a few minutes, we'd have to post the meeting. So, however you want to do it.
Superintendent's Evaluation and Goals. I will say this, the other piece about goals is, with the new superintendent, with his first three years, the goals are sort of structured already. They're structured really through the Superintendent's Class, but as of next year, the goals will have to be sort of decided amongst all of us, and move forward from there. It won't be structured, it'll be structured by us more than, it'll be structured by that program. So, I just raised that for everybody.
And we'll do that before July 1st.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
So, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The... We'll be doing the Superintendent Evaluation on Thursday, April 5th?
I think that would be correct.
The Thursday, April 5th will be the evaluations coming to me.
Okay.
Okay? And so, we don't have to do it then? I was thinking that it could, well, to be honest with you, I thought it could be done the first week in May, the first meeting in May. But they would be in. That would be the way the evaluation, again, as whichever way you guys decided, that would be the, you know, I've given back, essentially, I give them back to you and go from there. To be totally honest with you, what I plan to do that night, since that is our last meeting before the election, I plan to give you the evaluations to hold on to, just in case there's a change in me. But, you know, I don't want, I understand, it makes, it makes more sense that way.
Yep.
Okay?
Thank you.
Any further questions about that? Okay. Anything else?
That concludes my report.
Excellent. MSBA update, the School Building Committee met in the working group and the general. We progressed to a presentation about, I would say, the auditorium wing, and some, and that was the first time you guys saw the gym, wasn't it, Brian?
We saw, we saw the gym at the first, last one, and then it was fine-tuned for this one. As well as.
Lot of exterior.
Lot of exterior, landscape, exterior stuff, fully ADA compliant all the way around to get to every location, every field. That was great, wheelchair accessible. I thought that was awesome that they covered all that.
Yep, that was important.
And it's, it's shaping up by mid-March. We'll have to, we'll have the packet together, so you guys will see. After that, as I said, we'll have a presentation here, where you'll see how things have progressed and going forward from there. We're just trying to finish up to make sure we're in the, we'll finish up with the MSBA's guidelines, so we have a few things to get.
And the phase four submission is in April.
Mid-April.
I think we're voting, we're voting mid-April. Possibly during vacation week. The committee will be getting together to vote for the submittal, and the submittal goes right to MSBA. That'll be pretty much the, the whole package, which is great. I mean, we're on schedule.
Yeah.
That's the other, we're on schedule, which is great.
Yep.
Any questions? I'm going to move on to Consent Agenda. I'm just going to ask everyone to do me a favor with the following. I'm going to take the out-of-state field trip, which is the high school trip to Ireland and Scotland. Just so everyone knows, I believe that is July 1st through 10th, 2019. We usually have it beforehand. I, I would take that out, and I would ask that we bring it up at the next meeting, because Mr. Brenigan's not here. I know some people have questions about out-of-country field trips.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
The approval for the minutes from the 18th?
Certainly.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I would move that we approve the Consent Agenda, less the out-of-state field trip and the minutes for January 18th as presented.
Do I have a second? Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would move that we approve the school committee meeting minutes regular session of January 18th, 2018, as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous with one abstention.
Mr. Chair, I have no problem. Why don't we take this out-of-state field trip now?
No problem. And so, just so everyone knows, it's, it's.
19th.
While it's an out-of-state field trip, I would probably not normally put an out-of-country field trip in the Consent Agenda, but at least open this discussion, so.
Motion to approve?
Do I have a second?
Out-of-state field trip.
Discussion. This is a, a normal field trip. I believe this is the English department. They tend. Right, they tend, they tend to make it with English and drama, and so they spend a lot of time with, you know, various, various literary works and play pieces. My daughter had the opportunity to go last year on the trip to England and loved it, and I know a lot of the girls enjoyed it immensely, and we, we asked Mrs. Davis to come and sort of give us an overview with some of the kids, and it's, they do a really nice job at picking these trips. These are the same service that we use, and we've heard over and over again that they've been a wonderful service, and really go out of their way. The other thing I'll let everyone know, because I think it's important, is these companies monitor everything that goes on. There was a terrorist attack in London prior to my daughter attending, about a month, five weeks before, and they immediately sent out a letter to all the parents and, and students saying, we'll reimburse you in full if you don't want to attend. So, it's, they, they do a really nice job, and I can't emphasize enough how, how great this program is. So, any other comments or questions? Yes, it's 2019. We usually don't get it only a couple of months beforehand, and just so what happens is they have meetings, and kids have an opportunity to raise money throughout the year that goes to their, and, and they also split it up into, I think, ten pay periods or something like that, so parents can, can, and it helps. You don't have to pay for everything quickly.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Someday, I'd like to discuss the possibility of all foreign trips requiring one guardian to have a potential passport, that if something, God forbid, should ever happen, it would ease getting parents to the country in the future.
Oh, what, so you're saying that just?
If a student chose to go on a trip.
A parent would need a passport.
A parent would have to have a passport in hand prior to the trip, just in case they ever had to go someplace. I think that's one of my biggest concerns has always been, is what if? So, I, that would, someday, someday I'd like to think about that.
No, and you bring up a good point, but if, the other thing that I'd bring up, too, if you don't mind, I can have a conversation with Congressman Keating's office to find out how hard it is to process an emergency passport, so maybe that, maybe if it's not that bad, it would help you, so we can have that conversation.
Something, yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion? Greg?
All up on Brian's comment, having been on a trip where there was a situation where there was a medical emergency, so it's not necessarily the worst-case scenario, but there are a lot of different scenarios where a student may need to be sort of picked up by their parent overseas or something like that, in order for the group to continue, whether it's medical or something of that nature, disciplinary reasons. There might be a reason why a parent has to go and get their student. So, it is, it is a good suggestion to parents, at least if they are planning on having their kids go on this trip next year, because it's a fantastic trip run by a fantastic company that does do a lot of great things. It would probably be in the parent's best interest to make sure not only their kid's IDs and passports updated, but theirs are as well.
And I also think it's, it, it seems to me to be a natural progression, that if you're, if you, if you're going through the forms and filling out the forms for your child, that, you know, you spend the extra few dollars to fill out one for yourself and make sure that you have it, too. So, I, I, that's very interesting, and I, we can have that conversation. I think that would be great. Any further comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, we are flying today. MASC, I just put down that there's the Summit on Poverty next week, if anyone's interested in going, and the Day on the Hill is April 25th, 2018. Both are very good days. I'm pretty sure the superintendent and I are going the Day on the Hill, so if anyone would like to come, please let me know, I know most of the rest of you work.